Building and Grounds Committee come to order.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Jones and Mr. Schmidt are absent, so Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And new business?
I move that we approve the request by Jane Chizik, CEO of American Metal Prep, to enter into a one-year lease at $1,000 per month for 10,000 square feet of space at the former Foo Bank Building located at 106 East 11th Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is the...is he here? Hi. Have you ever heard of Ready Strip?
I'm sorry?
Have you ever heard of the company Ready Strip?
No.
Okay. Is this an alkaline stripping operation?
It's alkaline, higher pH.
It's not an acid system.
Yeah.
So electricity is used with the stripping?
No. Primarily, we have two methods, either burn-off oven-
Yes.
or chemical. Chemicals heated with natural gas.
Now, do you have to build wells for these tanks to sit in?
Yeah.
You don't have to?
There's only one tank.
Okay. How big is the tank?
There's a picture in here, but-
I saw the picture.
It's six foot, but it's cut in half, 13 foot.
Not large enough to dip cars?
No.
Okay.
I can do your fender, though.
I understand. Okay. Ready Strip does cars, that's why I was asking if you-
Oh, okay.
If you did that large. Okay. That's all I have.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion were adjourned.
Let's call the Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Jones? Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Lynn?
Jim?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign that motion carried. We have one request today from Mayor Clark for authorization to begin the recruitment process for Director of Aviation and make an appointment.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that matter? Hearing none. We need a roll call, please.
Mr. Walter?
Yes?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion passes, and we have a motion, a second on the German. All in favor for that? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Motion for the agenda and approval of the minutes of July 28th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Would you like me to take the new business?
Please.
Item one, Varsity Cleaners 216 West 11th is requesting a refund for garbage services in the amount of $441 for the following properties because they have a private hauler: 212 West 10th, 223 West 10th, 1210 Jefferson Street, and 1200 Commercial Street. And item two, Becky Seifred of 3616 Pheasant Lane is requesting a garbage refund in the amount of $94.50 because she has been charged for garbage when her condo association is responsible for payment.
And second?
We have a motion, a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass.
Excellent. May I take the pre-authorizations?
Thank you.
And the first is Clerk Finance, $31,466.76 for inter cog fiscal year 15, membership dues. Engineering, $18,946. Spraying trees in the riprap in various reaches along the flood control system. Leisure Services, $1,661 for dram shop liquor liability insurance. 9714 to 9615 for Young Arena to serve beer and wine coolers, also Sunday sales. Leisure Services, $17,115 replacement of chip box body with 14-foot dump truck body on truck number 302. Leisure Services, $1,077.20. Chemical and fertilizer for turf management in the downtown area. Mayor, $2,500 for Cedar Valley Coalition 2015 membership dues. And Street, $1,511.51 for degreaser.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass.
Motion to...oh. We have another item?
Do you want to take those, or would you like me to?
I could take those. Budget line items to be amended. And number four is to approve bu...project budget for golf marketing campaign funded with discretionary hotel motel taxes awarded April 2014 in the amount of $9,000. And five is to approve project budget for fiscal year school resources officer funded by the Waterloo Community School District in the amount of $250,000.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Do we have discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And on that note, I move that we pay the bills this week, which are $921,014.59, 921,014.59.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let's pay the bills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Were adjourned.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, everybody, to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. It's Monday, August 4th. I keep saying every time we change a month, I can't believe...couldn't believe it was July, now I can't believe it's August, but here we are in August. So anyway, welcome to all of you that's in chambers, welcome to those that might be watching on our public access television tonight. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment Thank you very much. Our pledge is going to be led by Ethel Washington tonight, our Housing Authority Director. Ethel, if you would, please.
Please, to my name, I'm signing the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we approve an amended agenda, and those amendments are changing B...B4 in the consent agenda to an expiration date of 2015, and a regular agenda deleting item number eight for further review, and also on number 11, add change order number one to Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC for changes, additional emergency repairs that are needed in this area. With the approval of the amended agenda, I also move that we approve the minutes from July 28th, regular session.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a proclamation tonight. It's an annual proclamation that I'm always glad to read. Perry, are you here? Perry Goodman? Well, I didn't see Perry.
Huh.
I'll be darned. I'm going to stand up, and I'm going to read it anyway, because I think that-
Yes, some people here for it.
Well, do we have people here for National Night Out? You guys are here? Well, come on up, for crying out loud. I didn't know why you were here, and I don't know if you know, but I have a surprise guest that just happened to show up for this. So come on up, and I think...is there someone in the back room that's going to join us up here? Crime Dog, come on out. Crime Dog is here.
Sure, I get here and you call.
I couldn't remember your last name.
That's all right.
Okay. Carol Gustafson, who is very active in our neighborhoods, and I thank you very much. And Crime Dog, everybody knows Crime Dog, so thank you that you could join us. It doesn't spread as much germs, you know, if you high-five instead of shake. Thanks for being here, Carol. This is a proclamation declaring National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 5th, 2014, called National Night Out. And whereas the 31st Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Waterloo to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas neighborhood associations play a vital role in assisting the Waterloo Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention programs in the city of Waterloo, and is supporting National Night Out locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Waterloo be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the city of Waterloo. And whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the city of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Waterloo to join neighborhood associations and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 31st Annual National Night Out on August 20...August 5th, 2014. That's tomorrow night. Carol, so you guys are going to have festivities, and there will be festivities across the city, I'm quite sure. Crime Dog, I'm not sure if you are going to get out and about, but you're always here to help us at least do the proclamation and tell everybody in the city about this. Carol, I'm going to give this to you, and can I give you the microphone and let you say something about your neighborhood, anyway? There you go.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to give this proclamation on behalf of our neighborhood association and the other neighborhood associations throughout Waterloo. As you mentioned, we really want to make Waterloo a better community, one neighborhood at a time, and that's why we concentrate on our neighborhood and try and work very closely with police and fire and code enforcement and other organizations to try and turn things around in some of the problems that we have in our neighborhoods. So we really appreciate the opportunity to come and be acknowledged. Thank you so much.
Very good, Carol. Thank you. And, you know, for all of you out there, you know, we get out tomorrow night, you know, get on the porches, get in your yards, mingle with people, say hi to your neighbor. It's an important gesture, I think, for all of the neighborhoods, particularly those that have neighborhood associations, but for all neighborhoods to just kind of band together and be neighborly on every night. But tomorrow night particularly. Crime Dog, thanks for coming. All right? Carol, thank you. Thank you for what you guys do.
We hope you and the council will come and-
We will be by. Thank you. And we have somebody to recognize also. As the months go flying by, so do our team members of the month. And I'm really glad to recognize tonight the guy that is here with us every single Monday night. How do you...can you do a selfie, Mark? Can you do yourself? Mark Cashman, who runs our television cameras for us on Monday nights, is our...what's that?
He could just walk up.
Yeah. Come on this...can you do that? Just somehow get yourself on camera. So get that, turn around, come in front of it, so that everybody can see Mark. Mark is our August Team Member of the Month. Thank you. Mark does this job, but he's also a very instrumental and an integral part of our website and getting information on the website. So when you guys go there and look for information about the city, if you have a complaint about the website, it's Suzie's fault. If you have kudos, it's Mark that does all the good stuff there. So, Mark, congratulations, and thank you for being with the city. So there you go. Thanks, ladies and gentlemen, for indulging me on those two items.
A selfie, that's-
A selfie. A TV selfie. I'm not sure about TV selfies, but...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we receive, place, and file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B14. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $921,014.59, 921,014.59.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second. On the consent agenda, council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Welper.
Before we go to item number two, we've got some recommendations of appointments.
Oh, we do. Boy. I've even got myself a note made here. It's particularly Bob Linscale. Bob, why don't you stand up? Bob is a new code enforcement officer with the city of Waterloo. I saw you walk in, and I wrote myself a note, make sure you mention Bob, and then I skipped right by. But Bob has been a part-time officer with us for a while and is becoming a full-time code enforcement officer, and he's doing a great job. So it's an extremely difficult job, as you're finding out. So you do a great job, and if you've done it part-time, now you're willing to take it on full-time. God bless you. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate very much what you do. So thanks to Bob. And I'll mention Evelyn Russell. Evelyn has been with us in the city for quite some time, but we had someone retire longstanding...Rita retired from the Waste Management Services Department, and Evelyn is going to step up and take her position as the Administrative Secretary in that position, another position that's incredibly important and very busy. So thanks to both of you. And I always tell folks, Bob, thank you for coming, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the council meeting if you'd like. If you don't and you want to leave, you're not going to offend anybody. So that's your choice, okay? Thanks, guys. And David, thank you for reminding me of that. I'm not sure why I have such a mental block about doing that sometimes. Thank you. Item number two, please, Mr. Welper.
Number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing for the purchase of snow removal equipment at the Waterloo Regional Airport carrier vehicle with rotary plow.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against the purchase of some snow removal equipment at the airport a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to airport director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Madam Clerk, do you have some bids for us, please?
There were two bids. The bid estimate was $625,000. The first bid is from MB Companies of Chilton, Wisconsin. The bid security was a bid bond for 5%. The bid amount was $545,892.545,892.00. The final bid was from Trans Iowa Equipment of Ankeny, Iowa, with a bid bond of 5%, and the bid amount was $550,672.550,672.00.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, Mike, do you want to...where's Mike? You want to come get the bids, please? Or do...
We've...
Never mind, never mind. Okay. Public hearings, please...I'm sorry, resolutions, please, and we only have three tonight, so three, four, five. If somebody could take those, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move to adopt a resolution approving a word of bid to Midwest Crane of Cedar Falls in the amount of $34,395 for providing installation and certification of a five-ton overhead crane for the welding shop within the central garage. Four is another resolution approving a word of contract to Western Waterproofing of West Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $51,157.07 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the East Fifth Street parking garage repairs, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Five is a resolution setting the date of hearing as August 18th to approve the midpoint construction status of the commercial pump station projects located at Vinson Street, Verdun Creek, Westfield Avenue, Blowers Creek, and Dry Run Creek, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions regarding any of those resolutions, three, four, and five? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
I get the motion carries. Would someone take item six, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider-
You're all right.
...and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4 approving a rezone on certain property regarding the rezone request from Brent Dahlstrom of Cedar Falls, Iowa to rezone 2.38 acres from R-2, one and two family resident district, and R-3, comma, R-P planned residence district to R-2, R-P planned residence district located southeast of 5609 Summerlin Drive.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. There was a hearing on this last year...last year. Last week, ladies and gentlemen, this is a second reading, but I will give an opportunity if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this at the second reading. I would allow that if there's anybody there, anybody that wants to speak to this. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
I get the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Yes.
Good. We'll take it up for the third reading next week. Item number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the second time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4 approving a site plan amendment on certain property for a request by Brent Dahlstrom of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for site plan amendment to the R2RP planned residence district to allow for the construction of five duplexes located southeast of 5609 Summerlin Drive.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. That motion fails also. We'll do the third reading of that next week. Item number eight has been deleted. I think we can do nine and 10 together. Mr. Hart, maybe you'd like to read those.
Mr. Mayor, number nine, I move to instruct city engineer to prepare plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, for the FY 2014 flood control gate wall repairs, contract number 867, and number 10, move to instruct community development director to prepare plans, specifications, form of contracts, also for request for proposal for demolition and site clearance services for 801 and 805 Commercial Street.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding either one of those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, for nine and 10, I move to receive and file plans, specifications, form of contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For nine and 10, I move to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, number nine, I move to adopt a resolution setting date of bid opening as August 21st, 2014, and public hearing as August 25th, 2014. And number 10, I move to set that date of hearing and bid opening as August 14th for the bid opening and hearing of August 18th, 2014 for both of those items, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice of plans, specifications, bid documents, form of contracts, taking of bids, et cetera.
Second.
Very good. I'm sorry. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, we had-
Mr. Mayor, number 11.
I'm sorry, we hadn't...sorry, and this is an important one. Number 11, please. It's an amended, it's a late addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to approve change order number one for an increase of $121,839.93 for work performed by Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC of Hudson, Iowa, for the Senate- performed by Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa, for the sanitary sewer improvements service area number 15 and number 16, Phase 1 CIP pipelining, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. Weren't we going to start talking about these change orders prior to the approval?
We were. Well, this is prior to the approval. This work has not been done, Mr. Jones, but the reason this came in late is this, it was an email mix-up. There was an email request by AECOM, by the contractor, that was sent to the clerk's office last week that was very timely in getting this in. Unfortunately, it got sent to dot com instead of dot org, the email was never received. What we're asking on this is that Municipal Pipe Tool is in place now doing pipelining on this project. We don't want them to pull off of the job, and they have agreed to stay on and continue the pipelining project at the same cost that it was originally bid. So rather than losing time and losing valuable time to get this, this is in Area 15 where we're needing this done, we want them to stay on. And it's really, it's listed as a change order, it's additional work that we're asking for at the same price that they bid the original project for.
Gotcha. Same rate, at least.
Same rate, yes, same rate.
Okay.
Okay. Are there further questions? I'm sorry? Yeah, a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for your understanding on that. As I started to say earlier, ladies and gentlemen, it is a short agenda tonight, there wasn't a lot here, but we got a lot of important stuff done. It is time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or council, now is the time to do so. Just step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Randy Harrod, 111 Highland. I just want to reiterate what Bill Cameron had asked the last time I had a council session, since he can't be here, and that is on the sportsplex removing the put clause. I think it'd be all best served if you could have an open forum. I know they're long and everything like that, but I think you would be better served, and I think that the citizens would be much happier.
Mr. Harrod, my intent is to have an hour's work session next Monday on this topic. We'll have a presentation by staff as to where we are with the sportsplex, and then I will allow public comment.
Okay, so the public can then ask questions?
Well, the public can make comments. It's not going to be a question and ask, I mean, depending on what the questions are, Randy, it's an oral presentation period, oral comment period. Do you have things to tell us?
But usually in an open session like that, the citizens ask a question and can expect an answer to the question.
We'll discuss that, okay?
Okay.
The citizens will have the opportunity to make comments. It will not be a closed session, or closed as in no comments.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. I was hoping to get, I brought a lot of issues to the council lately. I've tried to bring a lot of facts and not a lot of opinion, so I was hoping for an update. Have we done anything to alter the length of time our sanitation workers put in a day? Have we altered a route or done anything possible? Is there any way to get an update on that? Also, we talked about, or at least I did talk about a program for feral cats called trap neuter and return, and I know that we are writing for a grant. I want to know if we pulled that writing back, or if we're still looking to get the grant, and if we are, have we had some sort of time where we get a chance to talk about this change in city policy and procedure?
Steve, I'll answer very briefly, and then I'll refer you to Mr. Rice for any details and to Sandy for any details with the trap TNR.
Yep.
The answer to the first question is no. We have done nothing with the sanitation drivers, and we probably won't until the next contract.
Okay.
But it's up to Mr. Rice to see if he can figure out any scheduling changes. As to the trap neuter release program, your information was correct. What you didn't mention was if you go online and you Google that, there's as much information in support of TNR as there is in opposition, as there is in all kinds of situations. So we have done nothing contrary to what we originally planned on that. As far as I know, we're still going forward and asking for the grant. And anything further, I'm sure Sandy would be glad to talk to you about.
But how do we get that in front of you? I mean, is the council in favor of this large change? Trap neuter and return is a significant change that affects everybody, and I'm willing to put science against science. I looked at the studies most often cited by the trap neuter return people, and I think, I mean, it's a great website, Alley Cats and some of those, the science is light. I brought sources that I think we can all say scientifically above reproach. So it seems like there's a decision that needs to be made. How do we get citizen input on this important decision? It's a single person or two making decisions, trap neuter and return cats to the wild, but it affects all of us. So where's the public input, the debate, the decision?
I would encourage counsel to Google TNR, trap, neuter, and release, and judge for yourself the information that's there. There is a lot of information contrary to that. There is a lot of information in support of it by all kinds of groups. The request now is to simply apply for a grant. I think it's appropriate that we apply for that grant. It will be up to council's discretion whether or not to accept it and whether or not to go with that program if they want. Obviously, Mr. Murphy has made himself clear. You guys can study it yourself, and there will be a determination later whether we go with that or not.
I would point out that the contract we signed with Cedar Falls, from my understanding, calls for a different program for feral cats than any sort of trap neuter return. It calls for something that is closer to euthanasia for cats that can't be redeemed and reclaimed. So I would ask why we're giving Cedar Falls a different program than what we're getting, and it just seems fair that we just do one thing.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anyone else?
Carrie Gleason, 221 East Main Street. I'm with the Waterloo Center for the Arts. I'm the events coordinator, and I wanted to invite all the council and all the guests here to our annual Sweet Corn Festival this Saturday. It will be held at the Expo Plaza. We'll be having two Nashville recording artists. The event starts at 10:00. We'll be having a bags tournament, a chalk the block, an arts festival, and sweet corn. The event runs from 10:00 to 10:00 all day, so we hope to see you there, and it's going to be nice weather, so, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Appreciate it. You're doing a great job so far, by the way. Good job.
Carol Gustafson, 209 Forest Avenue. I have two things I'd like to bring to the council tonight. One is, it's come up several times in the planning and zoning meetings where we've had individuals that have come to the podium to talk about important issues to their neighborhood, and they haven't had the information ahead of time of what is going to be on the agenda. So therefore, because they don't know what's on the agenda, they cannot prepare adequately to be able to present the information that they feel is important for those of us on the Planning and Zoning Commission to hear. When I go on the Waterloo website, I'm not finding a lot of information that helps citizens be able to access services in our city. For instance, as a social worker with the Waterloo schools, I often assist families in when they are needing to be able to put a complaint in on their housing. And you physically have to come into City Hall, you have to ask for that form, you have to fill it out and turn it back in, and then it's sent to someone else who is going to determine then if it meets the criteria for going out and doing an inquiry. Well, shouldn't things like that be available on the website so that you can download it and I don't have to take all the time to come into City Hall and pick that up physically? In this day and age, we should have everything that we do citywide should be electronically available, and I just would encourage you to please look at that, because I do think that it is really helpful for our citizens to be able to access those pieces of information that they need in order to live in our town.
Sure.
The second issue is, is that our neighborhood association is very excited about getting our neighborhood watch program back up and running, but we have not heard anything from the chief or from other individuals about how is it going to be organized? How do we know how much we're going to need to put into the kitty in order for our drivers to start driving? Supposedly, there's a background check and a certain level of training that needs to take place before they can start driving, but we don't know what that is, and when is it going to take place? So it's really hard to get a commitment on financial commitment, and secondly, commitment from volunteers, when we really don't have a lot of information about what the process is going to look like and how we access that process. So if you could help us with that, we're very, very anxious and willing to sit down and help in any way that we can. We just need to have you let us know.
Dan, I'm sure that you heard that, and we'll take care of that first. Carol, let's let Suzie answer your about the website.
Counsel, actually, recently, I believe it was two weeks ago, approved a new document management system for the city, and part of that document management system is going to increase our ability to put things such as fillable forms and that stuff on our website. It will also allow citizens more access to our documents, such as our minutes and resolutions, and the ability to search those. So it's coming. It's a huge project, so I really believe we probably won't see a lot of it in the public for at least six months, but then we'll be releasing things as we get them complete, so it's coming. We're working on it.
And in the meantime, obviously, housing issues, you mentioned, Carol, are extremely important to us. I would encourage you to contact Abraham, if you haven't, in the Human Rights Office, to see if there's any way to assist you in getting that information and helping you fill that out or getting you some of that stuff ahead of time, because that's a huge issue to us, and we want to make sure that people have that.
Just one other thing that I wanted to say is, when you're talking about that it's a long process to do that work, and I understand, you know, that you guys don't have a lot of technical support, one of the things that you might consider is, up at UNI, they have a lot of students that need to be able to get credit hours doing practicum work, and these are people that, in some instances, are doing master's programs, and they need those practicum hours. Think about collaborating with Hawkeye, with UNI, with other organizations that might be able to give you some help getting that on the road.
Thank you. Very good.
Forest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road.